Let us pray. Each and all our Father, we come before you right now in the name of Jesus Christ. Heavenly Father, lifting up this council, heavenly Father, lifting up this meeting. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all that you're doing in the great city of Dennison, heavenly Father. Heavenly Father, we pray that you continue to ground them with wisdom, knowledge, heavenly Father, and understanding that is needed in order to guide and direct Dennison in the way it should go. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the diversity, heavenly Father, of that in which you've given us, heavenly Father, council as it continues to do the work of the ministry, heavenly Father, in forging, heavenly Father, Dennison, heavenly Father, into that in which you would have us to be. Heavenly Father, we pray that we be as Dennisonites, continue to do that in which you would have us to do in the direction of the council here, heavenly Father, that they be able to lead, guide, and direct us, heavenly Father, in all that we say and do, heavenly Father, that we may make Dennison that great city in which you've called it to be. We ask this in the name of Jesus Christ, and for your sake, amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. This evening, our pledge is going to be led by Chief Kenneth Jacks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Honored with Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and individual.
Thank you, Chief Jacks.
At this point in every meeting, we set aside for citizens to have an opportunity to do public comments relating to any action item on our agenda. Ms. Wallantine, did we get any request to speak cards? Therefore, there will be no public comments. Item three, consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
There is a motion by Councilmember Hender and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Crawley. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Item four A, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance on a city-initiated request to amend section 28.51.8 tree preservation and incentives for preservation of natural areas and trees, case number 2023-0530. Mr. Webb.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's always good to see you again. Appreciate the opportunity to make this presentation tonight. So I'll go through a little background. Mayor, I know how much you like long PowerPoint slides, so I did cut it down from 50 to 40. So just as a background, those that have been on the council realize that you did adopt a tree preservation ordinance in August of 2018. The primary goal was really just to prohibit the indiscriminate clearcutting of trees. I think some people observing that happening and led by the Planning Zoning Commission spent considerable time trying to come up with some draft standards that would prohibit that. Staff reevaluated that. What has happened over time, I believe the way the ordinance was written, and it's in the staff report, that there were numerous exemptions put in the ordinance, the 2018 ordinance, that really, for the most part, kind of rendered the ordinance mute. In fact, that for most cases, every tree could be removed on the property because of the exemptions and the ordinance. Staff received direction late last year to reevaluate the ordinance. There was a tree committee that was created to help staff with that. We met with the committee in 2023, got a lot of good feedback from them. Some of the observations that staff made in going through the ordinance is that the purpose section really need to be broadened. Any tree protection ordinance really to have protection from any challenges really needs to illustrate and indicate what are the true purposes, why is this necessary in Dennison. So we went through that. Thing that we caught up on is that a very large protected tree was established at 18 inches. That was significantly larger than most of the tree protection ordinances in the metroplex. We wanted to reevaluate the tree credit scale to really hopefully preserve the larger trees. It was really geared more to if you save more smaller trees, you got a pretty good credit versus really encouraging people to save the larger, what I call, the heritage trees. So we want to establish that, go through the exemptions, review that, and then talk about some enhanced landscaping for new developments as a concurrent. We did get questions and feedback from the tree committee. That's in the staff report. We answered all the questions. I won't go through them, but just we did the bullet point of some of the specific issues and questions they had about the ordinance. And again, all of those are answered in the staff report. So the key amendments. Again, we expanded the public purpose and definitions. Staff has recommended we change the size of protected tree from 18 inches to 10 inches. That's a 44% reduction. Talk about the Planning Zoning Commission recommendation in it. We'll continue to exempt trees on the single-family lots of 10 acres or less. But as you may know, the city is going through revisions to the landscape ordinance, and the ordinance does refer to that, that trees required by the new landscape ordinance, if adopted by the council or adopted by plan development districts, that those trees would continue to be preserved. We added a couple of trees to the exempt list. I felt that those trees are, you know, while some believe every tree should be protected tree, most cities have a list of exempt trees. They feel that are really just not high-quality trees. So one of the major changes for developments over 25 or more acres, staff is recommending that 15% of the caliber inches of the trees be preserved. Now I'll show you some indications how that can help. So it's not 15% of the trees, but the caliber inches. So depending on the number and type of trees, it could just be a few very large trees that could be preserved in an open space, a pocket park that would meet that 15%. The projects I've worked on over the last several years, that's a very achievable project on larger subdivisions. So we don't feel that that is an adverse impact on development. There was a credit in there for removing parking spaces, preserving trees. We felt that really was not practical. We have minimum parking standards as it is and didn't feel like that that really gained any value to the ordinance. Again, we're amending the credit scale to really encourage the large trees. So the larger the tree you preserve, you get higher credits against, you know, trees that can be removed. So for instance, in the report, you'll see that if you preserve a very large tree, you get a credit of five smaller trees that could be taken out that will not go against your mitigation. And then another important component is, in my review of ordinances, it's very difficult to come up with one single ordinance that covers every single type of property. The topography is different, the tree coverage is different, the layout is different, the use is different. And so from time to time, you really have to have provision where they can bring an alternative plan to the city council for review. And it's not just that you would weigh the requirements. There may be other places that trees go elsewhere in the city. But again, I think it's important that there's a direct path to the city council for you to look at some type of alternative compliance plan. So kind of examples of groves of trees. This is a development that I worked on the last several months in current. Similar topography, there is quite a bit of grade change, but on the edge, they're able to save a grove of trees along this open-spaced lot in the upper right-hand corner. And through the middle development, they really want to create kind of a nice open-space HOA lot with the sidewalk manaring in. So with those two groves, they're able, and this was a subdivision for 160 lots, they're able to meet the 15% easily on that. So I mentioned the landscape ordinance. Mary and her team are working with a consultant on developing a landscape ordinance. And I want to, you know, just bring up some examples because realistically, the sites are going to be, you know, a significant number of trees are going to be removed from development. It's just, it's just a, you know, the matter of fact. So most cities try to do a balance of a reasonable tree protection ordinance balancing with also a reasonable landscape ordinance. So here's an example. This is actually in my neighborhood. Again, a lot of topography. You see the retaining walls. They've done the grading in 2007, the streets are in. All the trees are gone on the left-hand side. They did preserve a small grove of trees on the right-hand side. So that was in 2007, 2013, the houses are in. You'll see the small trees have been planted, that grove was left alone, was able to mature. And now, you know, 11 years later, from 2007 to 2018, you can kind of see what's happened in that neighborhood, you know, well-canopied neighborhood with a tree preservation, excuse me, with landscape standards. Same thing for commercial quarter. This was a, just a two-lane foreign-to-market road outside of Frisco. This was an old farmhouse, had an old, you know, some old trees in that area, you know, windbreak trees. Commercial development, of course, happens. The road's expanded to a six-lane thoroughfare. But again, with a reasonable, you know, landscape ordinance, you see now the tree coverage and the canopy along the road that was not there before. So Planning Zoning Commission did meet a week ago, held a public hearing. They recommend approval with three stipulations, and that is that their recommendation is that the protected tree be established at eight inches rather than proposed 10 inches. Currently, the ordinance is 18 inches. They received a citizen request that the tree of heaven species be added to the list of exempt trees. It's a fairly invasive tree. It really isn't a very high-quality tree. So they requested that that species be added to the exempt list, that those could be taken down. And then probably the biggest recommendation is the ordinance, and this is actually something that got past me. We had the standard zoning violation that if an event occurred, that you would be fined per the zoning ordinance. But they asked that the penalty for the violation be for each tree removed rather than the property as a whole, and that's a significant matter. So I did provide some language to the city attorney if you're interested in going that direction. So you do have that recommendation from the Planning Zoning Commission? Be glad to answer any questions. And Mayor, I know this is a public hearing for comment.
Questions for Mr. Webb?
Thank you.
Julie, do you have something to add?
Yes, part of the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission was to have a penalty which had a little, gave the city a little bit more enforcement ability for the ordinance. And that would include a, that the fine be based on the caliber inch of the tree that was removed, so $150 per caliber inch up to the maximum allowed by state law. Each tree would be a separate offense, so there could be a citation written for each tree. No issuance of a certificate of occupancy or acceptance of public infrastructure, et cetera, until any fees or fines owed because of the tree removal are paid. And that's generally the summary of what we proposed to add to the ordinance.
The additional recommendations by the PNC.
Yes, ma'am.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? Yes, sir. Would you state your name and address for the record, please, and understand that you have three minutes?
I'm going to try to finish. As Dean Mayor and Council, my name is Mike Zapata. I reside at 602 Ambassador Street, here to present some of my thoughts on the proposed tree ordinance. In addition to being a concerned resident of Dennison, I have years of pertinent experience in the subject. I have over 26 years of municipal experience with the cities of Plano, Wiley, Flowermount, and Frisco as staff and as an elected official in Frisco. I've had quite a bit of expertise in creating and writing and implementing and enforcing ordinances in these cities. I'm also a certified Texas master naturalist with an emphasis in entomology and urban forestry, and I was the chairman for the urban forestry board in Frisco for 11 years. So I commend you for bringing this back up for reevaluation in this proposal. I think it's a really good step into protecting our city's most important natural resource. So I commend you for that. It's also a great tool for Dennison to get away from that perception that I'm sure y'all have heard, I know I've heard it when I moved here, that, you know, Dennison, like many small towns, is just a good old boy, back-room, handshake kind of town with the developers. And an ordinance like this, I think, can help eliminate that kind of perception. So I think this is a good thing for that. And just like diversity is needed in our leadership, our population, our culture, we need diversity in our tree population as well. And that's one of the things I want to talk about in the tree ordinance is because the way the tree ordinance is fashioned, it kind of leads us away from that diversity in our tree stock. John did a great job with this proposal. John was actually my peer when I worked for the city of Frisco. His office was actually right across from mine. While he did the planning, I did the code enforcement, animal services, neighborhood services management there. Some of the things I would hope we might consider is definitely reducing, I was on the alternate on the PNC board when we proposed the eight inches for the trees. As John mentioned in some of his notes to you, there are cities also that do have a six-inch minimum. I see no reason why we wouldn't adopt a six-inch caliber tree. One of the differences, and we talked about it in our meeting, was that a lot of the cities that John and I both have worked in were mainly agricultural, and so their tree populations were pretty minimal because of the agricultural properties of the cities. In Dennison, we're very fortunate and blessed to have an incredible diversity in our tree stock. And so we want to make sure that this ordinance protects that diversity in our trees. These preferred trees that are mentioned in here are great trees. They're long-lived, they're hardwoods, but they do take a long time to mature. And one of the downfalls of some of these tree ordinances is that it takes time for these new planted trees to get back to a, you know, a level where it actually provides what we need to do. So I definitely would encourage you to make that six inches rather than the eight. And for exemptions, let's remove as many of the exemptions as possible. Is that 30 minutes? Oh. Exemptions are just a loophole, so let's try to get rid of as many of them as possible. These fees, make sure these developers know what they're coming into when they come to our city to develop. We, I have seen these same developers in other cities I've worked in with the same spiel that they give everybody else. And so they're here, you know, to make money like we all are, but at the same time, I, as elected council here, you know, I feel we all, you have a responsibility to protect our citizens and protect our resources that we have here in Dennison. When you see the words compromise, that should be a red flag. Let's not compromise. We don't need to compromise. We can establish ordinances that are strong and that promote a really good quality of life in Dennison. So don't be afraid to enforce or to enable these strong ordinances. I worked in cities that had incredibly strong tree ordinances, and they were very successful. Enforcement was a challenge, but the end result was the cities that were beautiful, walkable, just had incredible populations of trees, and just really, really wonderful to live in. And I think the citizens of Dennison would like to have a similar experience here. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have anymore. Thanks.
Thank you very much, sir, for coming and sharing those thoughts with us. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council.
So for me, on the exemptions where it's exempted if it's 10 acres or larger, 10 acres is really big to allow clearcutting on. That's four city blocks. I would like to see that down to five acres. Because if it's going to be a development, that's going to take all the fabric, and 10 acres will be gone. And you can rightfully clearcut that. What do y'all think?
I like that idea.
There's a city just near Plano that there allows you to clearcut, clean and grow, even if there are majestic trees there, but you're going to pay a penalty by replanting the exact same calibrages back onto that developed acreage at the end of it. Now, I realize that resets the timeline on lifespan for that, and they were pretty sticky on the bigger ones, but it did make it so that if you had to clean a bunch of trees out of the way to build and make, you know, developable land, that they had a mechanism for it.
Which part of our ordinance covers that? But anything 10 acres or less is completely exempt from the ordinance, correct? Is that, am I reading it right?
Mary is shaking her head, yes.
I would, I like that idea, a little bit, down to five, because 10 acres is pretty big to clearcut.
Well, if you want to see an example of clearcutting, just go up to Flowers, and it's been clearcut, and it is several city blocks now that do not have a tree left on it.
How many acres is that? Do we know?
Well, I'm sure it's, I'm sure it's 10.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, and that's a lot.
And now we, and now there isn't a tree remaining, not a tree. But that was coincidentally prior to this adoption of this tree ordinance, so.
I would say I'm good with moving it down to five.
The other I had, is there any, is there any way we can do where when a tree is replaced, it has to be warranted? Like the owner of that property has to keep that tree up for a year? Because in my mind, some developers will come and plant a three-inch caliber tree, which is $450 or so. That's cheap for some of these developers. So what do they care if they run water to it, anything, and then it's dead? Well, they follow the ordinance, but we still have no trees still. Is there anything, John? Sorry, I'm asking my questions now. I was waiting for the public comments.
So, you know, within development, there's going to be a mitigation plan, a tree preservation plan. So there'll be, you know, a plan of record that shows you have decided to preserve this tree, and should it die through neglect, then, you know, there'll either be a penalty or they'll have to work up a replacement plan, you know, for that. So that's typically addressed when you work up the tree preservation plan. Those notes are typically, you know, placed on the plan. So it has to be maintained.
So it would be kind of a case-by-case.
Yeah. And, you know, acts of nature, you know, those things happen. But if they said, we intend to preserve to meet the 15% of this grove of trees, and for some reason, through neglect, then they'll have to, you know, come back and come back with a, with a preservation, with a replacement plan.
So let me understand you, John. There is a provision in there for neglect?
Excuse me? Yes.
There is a provision in there for neglect?
Yep, they had to preserve it.
And then it looked like we were recommending one tree per single-family home?
That's part of the landscape ordinance, and you've got a separate consultant, so that was just a minimum. It depends on the size of lot. I just know that some cities, they typically it's two per lot, but on smaller lots, that becomes a problem. And over years, the homeowners just cut a tree down because the canopy covers. So that's something in your, when you work, when you get to the landscape ordinance, I think that'll be a good discussion item.
Only other question I had is how did they do penalties for clearcutting? Say someone, I saw where it said that we would try to get someone out there to kind of estimate the caliber inches if we could see the trees torn down, but if they tear it down on a Saturday and burn it on Sunday, there's not, how do other cities?
It's tough. We, we've worked off of aerials. We've been out, and sometimes they've not gotten the stumps yet, and we've measured the stumps and estimated what it'd be at DBH. We actually had a situation in Prosper where developer did, started phase two, and we were able to get out there and, you know, document every single stump and, you know, assessed $180,000 penalty. But if somebody were able to, you know, get out there, clear, grow, pull the stumps up, then that's going to be difficult.
Thank you, John.
Any further discussion from council?
What did y'all think about the six to eight inches or, the eight inches were recommended by PNC, correct? 10 from the committee? I think eight or seven, honestly. I mean, to me, a compromise, if it's six to eight is the standard, seven's the compromise, 10 is the, we're giving up, which is what we kind of did the first time.
That's exactly what we did the first time we got there.
So, I mean, anyone have any thoughts on?
So, so are you recommending seven inches?
I would give seven, but I'm open to any suggestion.
Is there further discussion? So, is there a motion?
Do I have to add?
Whomever is going to make the motion needs to add all of the differences that were from the recommendation from PNC.
For the penalties, you can just say, add the penalties as presented.
Okay. And then I need to change. Here we go. Mayor, I move to approve the proposed amendments to section 28.51.8 tree preservation incentives for preservation of natural area and trees to include the size of a protected tree be established at seven inches rather than the proposed 10 inches. The tree of heaven species be added to the list of exempt trees. The penalties be adopted as presented, and that the exemption on individual, single-family, duplex, and town home lots, five acres or larger in size.
And, hold on, hold on before you second. And there was a, there was a provision in there for withholding a CO until the, until the fine was addressed?
And with the provision of withholding a CO until the fine is addressed.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Hender and a second by Councilmember Courtright. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Item five A, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on appointing a mayor pro tem to serve a one-year term. It is the tradition, our requirement of the council to appoint a mayor pro tem to serve one year each year. And it is generally the mayor's request and approval from the council. So do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to appoint Robert Crawley as mayor pro tem to serve a one-year term.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Courtright and a second by Councilmember Hender. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item five B, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on an ordinance canvassing the runoff election held in the city of Dennison on June 10, 2023, for the purpose of electing a council member for place five at large. Ms. Wallantine?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you may remember, at the May 15 city council meeting, the city council ordered a runoff election to occur on June 10th for the purpose of electing place five. That election took place on June 10th as ordered from the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And notices of election were given by the city of Dennison and the Grayson County Elections Administration as required by state law. And attached are the results of the election and the numbers approved by the Grayson County Elections Canvas Board. So staff recommends approval of the ordinance canvassing the runoff election as presented.
Questions for Ms. Wallantine? That was poor planning on my part to take it. You got done quicker than I thought you were going to. Discussion from council? A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance canvassing the runoff election held in the city of Dennison on June 10th, 2023, for the purpose of electing a council member for place five at large.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Crawley and a second by Councilmember Thorne. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Item five C, receive a report, hold a discussion, and administer statement of office, oath of office, and deliver certificate of election to the newly elected official to place five at large. Ms. Wallantine?
Thank you, Mayor. Now that we have officially canvassed the report and declared Aaron A.T. Thomas as the winner for place five, we now need to administer his statement of officer, oath of office, and deliver his certificate of election. So staff would recommend a motion approving that.
Discussion from council? Questions for Ms. Wallantine? A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the administering of the statement of office, oath of office, and delivery of certificate of election to the newly elected official for place five at large.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Crawley and a second by Councilmember Thorne. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Mr. Thomas, if you will join Ms. Wallantine, she will swear you in.
All right. If you want to set that here while you do this, and I'm going to have you face the family and friends you have here today, and just repeat after me. I, Aaron Thomas.
I, Aaron Thomas.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
As a member of the city council.
As a member of the city council.
For the city of Dennison, Texas.
For the city of Dennison, Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state, so help me God.
And of this state, so help me God.
Congratulations. And we'll have you go ahead and have a seat.
If you will join us at the dais?
Robert, show him how to turn on the mic. There's a recorded function. Okay, welcome.
Welcome.
Um, item six A, receive a report and hold a discussion regarding the quarterly budget update from the Dennison Arts Council. Ms. Lay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Dennison Convention, Convention and Visitors Bureau contributes fourteen percent of the hotel occupancy tax that we collect to the Dennison Arts Council for the purpose of promoting arts tourism each month. The Arts Council makes a profound impact on our community and the art scene in Dennison through their efforts. And here to give an update and, and share the success of this quarter is the President, Cindy Salem.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm very happy to be here and to be able to report on our first quarter a little late. So I'm going to add to May. Um, thanks to your generosity, we received since December forty thousand and some odd dollars. Thank you, Mary, my editor. I missed that it's one, one hundred and fifty-seven, not the comma or whatever was there, but it's forty thousand dollars. That really gives us a lot of traction. So, most of you were around on May sixth when we were able to inaugurate for the first time the One Hundred Block with an arts festival. We did an analysis of our walk and wine, I told you last year. It simply wasn't a tourism activity. We were seeing lots and lots of great people, and wine's a wonderful industry. But for us to really promote the arts and try to be, bring people in from the outside, we made the decision to try the arts festival. We were very, very excited about our first year, pulled it off in four months, and we did get a huge amount of help from the city. Donna and her crew were there almost all day long, just making sure everything was in place. We had the police officers. The Citizens Academy was there working that intersection all day long. So because of your generosity, we were able to advertise that throughout the state, in Oklahoma, and Texas. We have been working very, very closely with the Department of Tourism to co-sponsor as many things as we can and to coordinate our tourism advertising. Big dollars go into that. We budgeted a little over twenty-five thousand dollars this year, probably going to be able to exceed that. We've already spent fifteen thousand. This is videos, it is advertising, and again, in the metroplex area. Uh, we're really trying to, uh, spread out the word. And in order to do that, we're also putting a lot of funds into improving our website so it's more professional, and it does all those things websites should do that I have no clue about. So all these acronyms and initials, but we've hired professionals to do that. Uh, we're working off of a decent site, but it was homemade, essentially. So we had to make that next step. We've also hired some people to help us, um, improve our social media. So again, it's doing those behind-the-scenes things. All of this is also being coordinated with Rachel's team. So we're sending messages throughout the year that give a coordinated message about all tourism in Dennison, but also about the arts. Uh, again, thank you very much. Your report has all the details in it as far as the many activities. We're trying to do something at least every month that can be, um, advertised. Um, again, getting the word out to, we really look at a three-hundred-mile radius because we can bring those people in. Just like last year, we're looking at Dia, being Dia de los Muertos in November, to be a weekend-long event. So we're putting a lot of energy into what does that look like? How do we get people up here and get heads in bed so they see this not as a day festival, but something they can come and spend the entire weekend out? Um, so making good strides there. We'll, we'll know more as we get farther along. Um, but we've got a great entertainment lineup. We just got either eight to ten horses. They're going to do their whole act. I had no idea how hard it was going to be to get horses. It was hard. So we, uh, we think we have those secured, and that's always a really big hit. So we're looking forward to that coming up this fall, and I look forward to the next report. Is there any questions I can answer?
Questions from council?
Thank you.
But thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. It's a joy. Thank you.
That was a report only and requires no action from the council. A six B, receive an update on the USDA Rural Placemaking Innovation Challenge Grant. Ms. Tate.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, the first project update this evening is on the USDA Rural Placemaking Innovation Challenge Grant. That is the ARPIC, if you hear us refer to that. As a reminder, this is a two-year technical assistance grant that we received in November. The USDA awards to a nonprofit, and that would be, be Building Community Workshop. It's a nonprofit community design firm out of Dallas, and so they are our facilitator. We had our first workshops in April, over two days, on a Thursday and Friday. And while participation was lower than I would have liked, we had really good discussions and insightful observations from the residents that participated. Uh, topics discussed were neighborhood identity and characteristics. Uh, individuals were able to talk to us about, uh, what, how their neighborhoods were named, if they were named after maybe a flower mill or a building that was there historically. And we're talking about how to build, uh, community identity within each of the neighborhoods. So we've been really fortunate to have some great help on mapping out those neighborhoods and looking at how we identify them as, uh, a way of building community pride for those individuals that live there. We also looked at the architectural aspects that maybe identify some of those, uh, neighborhoods, and we're looking at how to, uh, uh, make a, uh, plan book or a design book to make sure that those are reflected back in, uh, new development moving forward. We also discussed infrastructure and connectivity. So that is infrastructure from sidewalks, water, sewer, um, alleeways, things like that, um, as well as connectivity being, um, pedestrian, vehicular, and just how people move throughout our city. The last topic discussed were obstacles to home maintenance and repairs. We really wanted to hear, uh, from the residents, the challenges that they have in maintaining their property. Uh, and so we did do that, and we, we heard things from financial, of course, but also, uh, title, chain of title, and, uh, things being held up in probate and things like that. So we're looking at how to offer those kind of, uh, assistance tactics, um, with maybe some of our, uh, community partners. Our next workshops, uh, the second of three, will be held on July fourteenth and July fifteenth. The fourteenth will be here in City Hall, uh, starting at ten AM and going until about two PM with different session, sessions, uh, taking place. The first will be on digital inclusion and communication, and that is a topic that the USDA requires. So we have to hold that. We've invited some community partners such as the hospital, the school district, uh, the United Way, Habitat for Humanity, to really have their insight as well on what they saw, especially as a result of COVID. We have that data now to know where those gaps are, and we're trying to identify, uh, and maybe give them the resources they need, um, through other grant opportunities to help bring, uh, digital inclusivity to Dennison. The second part will be a facilitator training. This will be for city staff, so across departments. Uh, they will be offering training for us on how to best engage with the community. Uh, so we'll be, um, having staff training offered to all departments that afternoon. Of course, that's open to all of you, uh, and to some of our community partners as well. Saturday, July fifteenth, will be held at St. Luke's Episcopal Church. We wanted to make sure that we were trying to reach as many people as possible and holding it in the community, uh, in a large space. Uh, we'll start at ten and go until two, and people can come and go. Our flyers were, uh, approved today, so I will be getting those out and distributing them. They are in English and Spanish. We'll have Facebook, um, pages and things like that. Uh, and we'll be circling back to the neighborhood and housing topics during that day. Any questions for me?
Questions for Ms. Tate?
Y'all should definitely attend one of these. They're, I get overly excited about it, but it's really, really cool what they're, what they're doing for our community.
This is, um, this is going to go a long way.
I hope so. It is fun and exciting, and it gives people an opportunity to really voice their concerns and their thoughts.
They just want to be heard.
That's right.
Thank you, Ms. Tate.
Sure.
That was an information item only and does not require action by the council. Item six C, receive a report and provide direction to staff on recommendations regarding the locations and requirements of mobile food units. Ms. Tate.
Okay. Second staff update, or project update, uh, is with regards to the food, mobile food unit ordinance. Uh, the food truck ordinance, and you'll notice I said "mobile food unit." That is how it's defined within our zoning chart or use chart. However, most people know it as a food truck. So they're synonymous terms, and we'll touch on that in a second. Uh, it was revised in January of twenty twenty-one, and overall, it works really well, but we've identified some gaps. And so this evening, we're seeking direction from all of you on the placement and zoning of these mobile food units, as well as some, uh, staff recommendations that we have, um, that will help streamline the approval process and help us do a better job of getting some of these in the right places. Uh, as well as direction on, um, placement in our city parks. Right now, they are exempt, and we'll, I'll tell you why in a second. Uh, mobile food units are allowed in all of the districts on your screen. So essentially, uh, most of the zoning districts, with the exception of residential districts right now. And they're not permitted in parks because parks do not have their own zone, right? They are, uh, zoned according to what they're adjacent to. So Waterloo Park is zoned seven, single-family, seven point five. Other ones may be zoned, uh, multifamily. So they're not their own entity necessarily, and that's causing a little bit of a, of a problem for us as we're moving through this. The central area, which is the downtown, uh, district, requires a conditional use permit, and we, we think that's appropriate, um, to make sure that they are located where they need to be. But that does extend the approval process for us. So for example, someone could not come into Chris, uh, who receives the application and then, uh, get approval for the next day. With the CUP, they have to go before planning and zoning, and then to your body as well. So, um, that approval process takes a little bit of time, but we think overall that should stay. The Parks and Recreation Department is requesting that we allow, uh, mobile food units within the parks during seasonal play, uh, and possibly also during tournaments as well. Right now, they can negotiate that, um, with the, the tournament vendors. Um, and they have already started having discussions about how to establish an internal process for vetting those out, which includes procurement and a fee structure. So Justin and his team are the ones that actually came to us and said, "Can you help us get this done?" Uh, and so Chris, myself, and Justin have talked through a lot of it already, and we just need additional direction from you on this part. This would not compete with the city-operated food truck that's out there. Um, Justin would make sure that they don't have the same offerings so that we're not losing that revenue from our city-operated food truck. So our recommendations to you, uh, include having an amendment to the food truck ordinance that requires a site plan and a parking plan. Right now, we, uh, have a lot of hands in departments that touch on, um, the approval process for the application. So a site plan is not included, nor is a parking plan. Planning and zoning has to approve the site, and then fire, uh, the fire marshal goes out and inspects the truck. He also looks for, um, how close it is to a building and what access is to get in and out of a parking lot. So there are a lot of moving parts, and this would help us to really hone in on where the food truck is going to be located within the parking lot and kind of take out, uh, we see often that they'll move to spot to spot, and then we're having to go out and say, "Hey, you can't be there," and start the process all over again. So it would just help us to streamline that. Uh, looking at the definitions again and the ordinance to make sure that it's consistent in language. As you see from my presentation, I say "food truck" and "mobile food unit." So, uh, it is consistent throughout most of it with "mobile, um, food unit." And then we also define "food truck park" within our use chart, but not "food truck." So it just gets confusing sometimes for people. Uh, we also need some direction from you. So I threw a lot of information out at you just now. Um, but we are looking to you to tell us whether or not you agree that, uh, food trucks should be allowed in the parks. And then also, if we want to maintain or change the, uh, uh, locations of where the food trucks can be. So if we were to pick priority, I would ask that you give some direction on the parks. That way, if, um, the Parks and Recreation Department need to start getting their process identified in term, in time for, uh, the fall season, uh, because it'll take some time for us to get the amendment in place and the approvals, that we at least focus on that, if you would.
I have a question, Mary.
Sure.
This is probably for Justin. Uh, Justin, for example, um, at the end of soccer season, we've had, we've had food trucks there for the soccer, for their end-of-season celebration. So was that done through a special event? Was that how we allowed food trucks to be there?
Yeah, the, um...
On that occasion?
Yeah, so the end of the, the year, TSA closing ceremonies, that's a special event. So they fall within the special event process. And to Mayor, um, Mary's point, uh, we don't necessarily want to open up to all mobile food units just to have the parks open for everyone. We want the services to be complimentary. There's one service right now that we know to be very complimentary, and that's shaved ice. So we just want to make sure that we're able to move forward with those services that enhance, uh, those quality-of-life services.
Okay. So, so they still can be in the parks if they go through the special event process. But this is for, for example, you were talking about, uh, allowing them during the season.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that would be through, uh, that would be through ordinance that we allowed them during the season and, and not at any other time. Okay.
That's correct.
So, well, I personally don't think they should be allowed in the parks willy-nilly. I think it's something that should be controlled, and it should be, uh, addressed, um, based upon the events that are occurring in the, in the parks.
Yeah, we agree with that, and we would want to make sure those processes are in place to vet that.
I like it, though. If we can give y'all the power to approve it based on you're the one planning the events or the games and that kind of thing, then it's, it just makes it easier for y'all too. I don't see any harm in it. Good to get there.
Any other questions for, for Ms. Tate or, or Justin, who I pulled into the conversation?
So, Ms. Tate, on some of these, we're maintaining or changing locations. Could we, can you permit the location, or do you have to permit the unit? You know, like you said, a parking plan and everything. Well, if there's one that's been here forever and a new truck's just going to take that place, could we not do the site? It has to be per unit, so either way, it has to be that.
Right, because each mobile food unit comes in for a permit, right? So they have to submit, like, their health, uh, department certificates and all of that kind of stuff. So there are specific things that they have to do. And if it's a different operator, you have no idea what condition it's in and things like that. So we do have some that are more permanent, and so they're on a pad. Um, and they do have, like, water and electric and things like that, but they still fall into this category that we're discussing.
I don't think because there's a, a grandfathered spot that we should just automatically approve someone to go into that spot.
Oh, yeah. No, I was just thinking if it's a twenty-foot food truck and it's another twenty-foot food truck, applying to go in that spot, it would be easier if it was for that. I don't know how to say it. You wouldn't have to have the parking plan and everything redone.
Sure.
Because it already had it. You still have to apply, but it was a long day at work. I'm not thinking this one all worked. This is not. You threw a lot of info at me.
I did. And one thing I kind of forgot was that a lot of cities have food truck parks, right? They have dedicated parks only, and they're only allowed in those parks. So that's another piece to consider. Is that something we want to move towards? But then we have to look at land and those kind of things. So it's a greater discussion, most likely, but we just need some direction on how to investigate or where to move forward.
Well, we, to my knowledge, we only have one food truck park, right?
That's correct.
And, uh, if we were, if there was an application that came in for another food truck park, would it require a conditional use permit?
Depends where it would be located.
Okay.
Because that's a park only in name. I don't think, I mean, it's a parking lot, right?
Yeah, it's, it's a parking lot. That's true.
Well, if it was a central area, it would need a CUP, but some of the other areas don't require it.
That's correct.
Okay.
Communities that have food trucks to parks get better use out of their parks. People stay longer, they enjoy the amenity more, they don't have to move to go, and you have an easy place to have your trash deposited, right? So it creates a habit pattern.
Right.
The ones that I like, the way they've done it, they have a designated spot for the food truck so that that's the habit you're building is that, and the park spaces, there's always one space where everyone goes. And the universities that do that tend to do a very good job of making this outdoor event venue with grass and trees and not much else infrastructure-wise, and it creates a pretty utility-driven experience.
I have a lot of confidence in the feedback from, from Parks and Rec. And I think... I have a lot of confidence in the feedback from, from Parks and Rec. And I think it makes sense to have food trucks there during season and special events. I don't know that it makes sense to have them there all the time. So my, personally, I would prefer that that they're, that they're used in, during season and, and special events, so.
And I think you take a baby step and try season and special events first. If you do too much, we don't know what didn't work.
Sure.
So if we do a baby step and that works, then we can maybe do food truck park lifts within a park.
Any other information you want to share with Ms. Tate? Does that give you some? I'm sorry.
No, I just think we are so blessed to have the Park Department that we have and the events that they've been able to put on and move forward, that we're blessed in our community to have, have the resources that we have, and I certainly have the faith in the Parks and Rec Department to come up with the appropriate measures.
I agree. So does that give you your direction you need? Okay. Again, that was information only and does not require official action by the council. Pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the council reserves the right to convene an executive session from time to time as deemed necessary. During this meeting, to receive legal advice from its attorney on any posted agenda item as permitted by law or to discuss the following: discuss the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment of duties, discipline, or dismissal of, or to hear a complaint against a public officer or employee, Section 551.074. Municipal Judge, interim city manager. The time is 6:52, and the council is now in executive session.